This is new stuff. Okay, we're on.
Kenmore City Council is now in session. The clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Shrevnik.
Here.
Councilmember O'Kane.
Here.
Councilmember File.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
All right.
All right. So, we had that comments were to be submitted in writing by five o'clock, and they would be read into the record. However, we have no comments. Just letting you know ahead of time. So, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, the agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda, citizen comments. So I just explained, we have none. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded.
So that was Councilmember Curtis as the first and the second Councilmember File?
Yes. So, I don't know. Council, what do you think? We can either do a roll call vote on this, but it's pretty routine. We can just do a voice vote. We always do a voice vote, so let's do it unless there's objections. Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Okay, because, yeah, I heard something there. Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? So, there are no opposition. The consent agenda will stand approved as written. Next item on the agenda is business agenda, December 2019 financial report and presentation, and potential pandemic impacts on the budget. Ms. Gregory, our finance director.
Great. Thank you. And greetings to everyone. Yeah, so tonight I would like to begin with an overview of the results of operations for 2019, which was the first year of our two-year biennium. 2019 did not close with a surplus, but with a deficit of $1.4 million. However, I know that's not what you like to hear, but that resulted from very deliberate actions taken by the city. In 2019, there were $2,505,000 of one-time transfers that were recorded from the general fund to other funds. And these included $427,000 that was identified during the development of the biennial budget from savings and other actions. I think that we all participated in, you may recall. And these were designated to transfer to the street fund for road preservation. Also, we identified $1,624,000 after closing the 2018 fiscal year, of which $1 million could be transferred to the street fund for additional road preservation, and $624,000 to the strategic opportunities fund. Without these one-time inter-fund transfers, the general fund would have closed with a surplus. But even so, with the inter-fund transfers this year, this past year, the general fund reserve at the end of 2019 is $3.5 million, which is almost 28% of the annual operating expenditures. But here is a little more detail. At the end of the year, revenues were 50.3% of the biennium budget, and expenditures were 51.6%, if you count the transfers, or 44% without transfers. All department budgets, except legal and public work, which had the one-time public workshop startup costs, all those budgets were less than 50% of the two-year budget. The best news regarding the general fund revenues came from sales tax. Compared to the original budget, sales tax revenue was $660,000 higher than that budget, largely due to internet sales and sales tax on construction. The construction sales tax was better than 2018 by 36%. It's a big number. And in fact, overall, sales tax was higher than 2018 by almost 14%. Other revenues that were disappointing, however, included utility taxes. They were below budget in all four categories for a total of $197,000. Licenses, permits, and intergovernmental revenues fell short by about $106,000, although charges for services like plan review and land use were better by about $115,000. So there was kind of an offset there. The other operating fund, the street fund, ended the year with $3 million, which included the one-time transfers from the general fund of $1.4 million that I just mentioned. Transportation benefit district revenues were $358,000, but we are unlikely to see those in 2020 or beyond. Expenditures of $2 million included $623,000 of road preservation expenses, with another $800,000 expected to occur in 2020. In other funds, real estate excise taxes were about $1.5 million, which is a great number and which exceeded the budget, was slightly higher than 2018. But actually, that number was less than both years 2016 and 2017. Park impact fees were very sad. They were only 19% of the two-year budget and totaled only $92,000. Similarly, transportation impact fees were 22% of the two-year budget at $430,000. But several months ago, you may or may not remember, we did revise our projections of these revenues downward so we could be able to anticipate how a decline might impact our capital project budgets. And we didn't see a problem. No, we will likely have a problem in 2020. Cash and investments at the end of the year were $27,693,000, with $7 million in federal agency notes, like the Federal Home Loan Bank, any May. We have a million-dollar CD, over $13 million in our state local government investment pool, and over $6 million in cash and savings. I was excited to see rates and earnings slowly trending upwards for a while, but I'm not excited anymore because the markets have changed direction. Sometimes I like to look at the unemployment and the Dow Jones for you. And so when I looked at the Bureau of Labor Statistics today, they reported unemployment for December of 2019 at 3.5%. That's about as low as it's ever been, at least since 2010, which is as far back as the chart I happen to be looking at. By March, it's reporting 4.4%. And in April, looking at a different website, theunemploymentextension.org, it's up to 7.8%, and we all know that we're expect that that's going to climb. The Dow Jones closed on December 31st at $28,583. Such a big number. Today, it closed at $23,390, down even from yesterday. So, hasn't that been a roller coaster? You've been following the Dow Jones. So before I conclude, I do want to briefly share with you what Rob and I are forecasting as of today, based on almost no real data, but with anticipation that there are going to be pretty severe and unprecedented financial impacts to the city in 2020. Our property tax levy for 2020 is pretty much set. And even with a delay in tax remittance deadlines, we should still receive that revenue, which is about $100,000 more than we had in the budget. But besides that positive news, we expect sales tax, gambling tax, BNO tax in the general fund, as well as gas taxes and utility right-of-way permit revenues in the street fund to drop about 25%. The city's sales tax base is not as elastic as many cities in that we aren't closing malls or car lots. We expect to, we receive a significant sum from internet sales in businesses that are still expected to maintain some volume, such as Safeway and our pharmacies. We don't expect utility taxes to be any better in 2020 than they were in 2019. So that would be a reduction to our budget as well. Today, I did read that Verizon reports a surge in calls to levels typical only two calls on Mother's Day. So that would be good news for us. We don't expect to see any increase over 2019 in franchise fees, but we do think that governmental revenues, which are primarily the liquor taxes and liquor profits plus criminal justice distributions, to be close to 2020 budgeted levels. I've been reading and seeing in the news that liquor sales are booming. So that could be a positive. Same for development revenues. At least our thinking is that projects already in the pipeline, although not active today, will pick up again after restrictions are lifted. However, we might see that drop off in 2021 and beyond as far as any new projects or developments are concerned. And in the street fund, of course, we have projected no revenue from the transportation benefit district. So in summary, the projected revenue shortfall is just over $1 million in the general fund and $700,000 in the street fund for a total of $1.7 million or 11.5% below our budget. Capital revenues, like rate and impact fees, are expected to have a pretty substantial negative outlook also. But we haven't yet really quantified those or analyzed how that will affect our capital projects. We've already revised our projections downward, as I mentioned earlier, thinking that a recession might be brewing, but we do need to take another look at those. So again, these are pretty much instincts and guesses at this time with little data. We don't receive sales tax reports from March until the end of May. And it's only now, just mid-April. And through March, looking at our revenues, everything looked pretty status quo. And there was, there's really not much to go on that is, you know, good, good concrete data. So what we are doing now to address the revenue picture is to scour our 2020 expenditure budgets for reductions in expenditures, especially discretionary expenses. Every department is on notice to be doing this. But we're not going to identify $1.7 million that way. However, we'll look at and evaluate everything. We have stopped recruiting for the open plans examiner position. And we'll also look at our budget through the lens of the work we did with priority-based budgeting to ensure that we continue to do, what we continue to do this year aligns with the results and priorities of the community. I'm also working on projections into 2021 and 2022 as we believe some of these COVID-19 impacts will not show up immediately or even recover quickly once we are free to move about the country or even the city. The city is fortunate, however, to have substantial reserves, which we don't want to use, but they are there as a safety net if necessary. We have $3.5 million in the general fund, $1.3 million in the strategic reserve, which is our rainy day fund, and $3 million in the strategic opportunities fund. So we know we'll get through this. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and take your questions.
Any questions? I'm not seeing anybody. So, oh, there we go. Well, Councilmember Curtis.
So, if we needed more money for some reason, could we borrow money back from the street fund? So we made a loan to the street fund. People are driving on the roads less, so they're not wearing them out as fast. If we actually needed to suspend some roadwork and use that money for general fund, could we move that money back to general fund?
Money that we already transferred?
Correct.
Yes, yes. That money was transferred to the street fund for preservation overlay, you know, slurry seal, crack sealing. That is one, one activity that could be delayed, deferred. I'm not necessarily favorable. I don't think that's favorable because every day, every year, you delay maintenance on our roads. You get further behind, but it's, it's an option.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I incur with Joanne Gregory on that. I don't see delaying pavement preservation as a way to save money because with roads, it's pay now or pay a lot more later. And roads deteriorate, deteriorate over time, and they deteriorate quickly as each year passes by. They go down a steep slope of deterioration. So delaying pavement preservation, which I see as an essential service, you know, when it, when it comes right down to it, when you get down to what, what do cities do? They provide cops and roads. That's the bare bones of it. And I think it's going to be really important that we preserve our pavement because if we, if we don't, we'll be paying a lot more later.
Councilmember Marshall here with a question. Okay?
Mayor, you're muted.
Yes, I see you.
Okay. Roughly $7 million some dollars were in reserves. Is that how much it was?
Yes.
But seven, and then how much more? I don't have that precise. I know.
Well, in the general fund, we have a reserve of $3.5 million and $1.3 in our strategic reserve rainy day fund, and $3 million in strategic ops. So that is 6, 7.8 million. That it.
Right.
That are available.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Anybody else? So I have a quick question. Internet. How much are we receiving from internet sales tax? Do you have those numbers for a quarterly basis or for the year?
For 2020?
No.
And you're over 19? No, I don't have those numbers. I remember when our intern did that analysis last summer. He anticipated 200 to about 200,000, 250,000. I don't have all those, all that data at my fingertips here at home, but I could probably try to make a rough guess.
Well, you mentioned it when I think you were going over.
Well.
New sources, and maybe that was 2020. Do you have it for 2020?
No, it's 2019.
18, okay.
I know it's several hundred thousand dollars because obviously Amazon has popped up to the top of the charts.
Right.
So I know there are other internet providers out there. I don't know who they all are. But, you know, just looking at them, I didn't do that ahead of this meeting to see, you know, over the.
Yeah, I still have, I still have the same concerns in that you're dealing with one zip code, one zip code. Not like, like Forest Park has two zip codes. Both will has far more. So Kenmore has got one zip code. It should be relatively easy for Department of Revenue to tell us what our, our internet sales tax revenue is. This is not rocket science. It, it seems like it's a big secret. It's very difficult for you to figure out, so.
It is somewhat confidential information.
I don't want to know the company's name. I want to know how much total we got.
Okay. Well, I'll do my, my best. I'm not as.
I mean, you don't need to be wasting time on this. The DOR should be able to tell the cities how much revenue has come in. We could care less which companies it is. We just want to know total revenue. Councilmember Curtis.
Maybe we could invent a new tax called the Zoom tax.
There you go.
Yeah.
In place of utility taxes.
Zoom has already done that. Their stock has gone through the roof. Councilmember Marshall?
Yeah, what was the, what were the confidential aspects of the data? Was it based on the sales, like where or what address or the, the parties?
No, it's the company name that sold it that's paying the taxes.
That's confidential? Or some aspect of that is confidential? Oh, okay. Wow. All right, didn't know that. Thank you.
Yeah, so plywood supply. We can't ask how much by the tax revenue plywood supply generated. We can ask it in a different way. Construction revenue, is that right? Ms. Gregory?
Is what right?
Can we, can ask how much tax revenue is generated from construction?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we can't ask how much tax revenue is generated by plywood supply, for instance.
Correct. And those categories are in your financial report. There is a chart that shows the $2019 from the various segments. So retail.
Not internet.
But not internet. So maybe we'll just add that for you going forward.
Well, it seems that's a secret.
But see, they don't break it down into a, what we call a, a sit code, like retail versus construction. So it's just not as easy to find. But we know who the big players are. We can, we can do a pretty good estimate.
That's good.
And I feel like even the Safeways and some of the pharmacies and everybody's shopping online now.
Yes.
So I don't expect, I'm probably wrong, but I don't expect a big dip in those type of revenues.
Right. I just, I just don't think it should be secret. I think it should be easy for a city to find out. Anyway, any other questions? Councilmember File.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Baker. One of my questions is regarding what we might consider for future taxes. And my thought on that is we have the business registration tax that we already have in place, our registration for our in-city businesses. But we don't necessarily yet apply a tax to businesses doing business in Kenmore that are external businesses. And it's something we can consider. There's an update that's due sometime here in June, July 2020. And something that we need to consider as a council anyway. It seems like a practical thing we might want to consider adopting after having taken some association cities training over the weekend. I was looking at those different options available. Or do you have any information on that?
I don't have any information on that.
Your Honor, do you mind if I jump in?
No, please.
Okay. Yeah, so our intent is to keep the Financial Sustainability Plan Task Force going. And so we're going to meet with them on Thursday. And it's been a while since we've met with them because of this whole pandemic. But we're going to kind of give an updated picture to them of what the budget situation looks like. We'll also be doing something similar with you all, the city council, on the 27th. So, yeah, I think everything's going to be looked at with the task force moving forward, including revenue options. But let me also give some other context to this. I really think we need to take this seriously and cut as much as we can without dipping into reserves. And here's why. Before the pandemic, our financial lines were projected to cross in 2022. And then, then right after 2022, our reserves were going to be depleted really quickly, where we get to a negative balance, if you combine general fund and street fund together, probably by about 2024. And so, in other words, insolvency in about four years from now. That was before the pandemic. So now, instead of the lines crossing in 2022, they're crossing right now. And that means the line, not only the lines crossing or moving, have come up, but also depleting our reserves is now happening faster and sooner. And so we got to get on top of this. We can't sit back and say, oh, we have $8 million in reserves. We're doing great. We'll just, we'll just rely on those reserves and wait it out. No, because if you do, your, your lines are still crossing and you're still depleting your reserves. And so I can't emphasize enough how much we need to try to cut as much as we can right now. And that combined with the fact that increasing taxes at this time is probably not the most palatable thing to do right now. And so I think it's, and I'm concerned about this. Now, let me balance that. I just told you how concerned I was because of our reserves and, and lines crossing. And that's, I still hold all that to be true. On the flip side, I feel like we are in a, we positioned ourselves pretty well for this for three main reasons. One, we have built up our reserves. And we probably will have to dip into them a little bit. So that's number one. Number two, as Joanne mentioned, we don't have the elastic tax problem that a lot of other cities do. Our taxes are pretty stable. Even our sales tax compared to other cities is not as elastic as other cities' sales taxes. Now, we're still predicting a 25% drop. And then third, for 2020, we had already projected a recessionary influence on the budget. So we had already dropped revenues like sales tax and things like that, and still achieved a balanced budget. So we weren't counting on big skyrocketing revenues to begin with. We were already kind of ramping down some of those elastic revenues in this already adopted budget. So for those, for those three reasons, reserves, not so elastic revenues, and our projections already had some recessionary assumptions in them have positioned us pretty well for this situation. But that said, I still think we need to take this seriously and do what we need to do to cut.
Yeah, I, I think we, we agree with you. So, anyway. So we need a motion to accept and file the December 2019 financial report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't get that. Who was the?
It was okay. It was Councilmember O'Kane that made the motion. Councilmember File seconded.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
You already got me. Thanks.
Yes, I did. I'm sorry. Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. So the agenda, the, the financial report, the acceptance is unanimous. All right, next item on the agenda is approved resolution 20-338, Ratifying a Proclamation and Issuance of Emergency Rule 20-06, A Temporary Moratorium on Small Business and Nonprofit Tenant Evictions.
That would be me.
That would be you. So, city manager, please proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is the first time in my career where we've passed so many emergency rules that we actually have to number them. We, I've worked for cities before where we've had, where we've done emergency rules, but not in the quantity that you actually have to number them and track them, which speaks to how serious this pandemic is. And on your consent agenda, you just amended several emergency rules that extend those rules out through May 4th in keeping with the governor's order. And you have before you a new proclamation or emergency rule that would put a moratorium on small business and nonprofit tenant evictions. And the purpose of this falls under the reasons, similar reasons to why we did that for residential tenants, including health and public safety, and also to help protect the viability of our local businesses during this health emergency. So the moratorium on small business and tenant evictions would go through May 4th. And it would be for small businesses, meaning businesses under 50 employees at the location here in Kenmore. It would also suspend accumulation of late fees for non-payment of rent. So that is the emergency rule in front of you for you to consider.
Questions? Councilmember Curtis?
So I, I don't feel strongly.
So I, I don't feel strongly enough about this to vote against it, but my concern is how focused or non-focused we want to be. So if the focus is public health, then clearly, keeping people in their house makes a difference. Since most people aren't going to work anyway, I don't think that this resolution is aiding public health. So there's, there's lots of economic and business and other decisions that could be decided and could be influenced. And my preference as a small city would be stay focused on the health issue, the public health issue, rather than getting into all the dozens of laws and rules and things we could come up with if we wanted to go down that track.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. I see this as a, at least helping the public health concern in keeping people in their homes in that at least some of the businesses it would be helping out would be our remaining restaurants or food suppliers in the cases where they, they are tenants. And so hopefully, at least that would help people stay home or, or at least not, you know, on occasion, if they still have the money, when they still have the money, not having to go to the grocery store or another place where it may be much closer to other people in proximity to that. Might be easier or it might be safer at some times to be able to order out food from the restaurant. And also, I just see it as a, as a big way to try and help our local businesses. And then I had a question. I, and I apologize if you already covered it, City Manager, but what other jurisdictions had passed similar measures?
I'm only aware of one, and that's Kirkland. But that doesn't mean that there aren't others, but that's all I've heard.
Right, Kirkland. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I, I kind of concur with Councilmember Curtis. I don't see this as a, a public health remedy in any way. You know, our original proclamation around residential eviction certainly is a public health issue, trying to keep people in their homes. This is, I guess I see this as part of an economic recovery plan. And I, I think I asked, but maybe I didn't ask it clearly a couple of weeks ago to, I don't know if you can articulate some of the other measures that are available for business, because it feels like it's part of a broader, like I said, economic recovery strategy. And, and maybe we have a piece of that, and maybe it's being covered by others. I am just not quite clear.
Yeah, I, I think the biggest component of that is the $2 trillion stimulus package that was adopted by the federal government a couple of weeks ago, including the Payroll Protection Program, where small businesses are allowed to take loans that are forgivable if they retain their employees. That's the biggest piece of it. The federal government is definitely going to be the biggest help in this. The governor, with his contingency budget, just authorized $5 million statewide to help small businesses with 10 or less employees, but that is such a tiny micro amount for a statewide thing. And it's not faulting the government. He has, or the governor, he has, he's only doing what, what he has within his contingent budget. Something bigger would probably have to go in front of the state legislature. Yeah, but between, so the, the state, that $5 million by the governor is probably not going to help Kenmore businesses very much, but the federal government's stimulus will definitely be a big help.
And is that just, is, is there just loans? I, I mean, it seems like I get emails almost every day about all sorts of resources for small business. So I'm not keeping track of all of those.
I think the biggest benefit for small businesses through this CARES Act is going to be the forgivable loans.
Okay.
So if they retain employees and don't lay off employees, then that loan becomes forgivable.
Deputy Mayor?
So I, I would hope that we wouldn't just view this as solely a public health issue, because the two, the economics of the public health are very much tied together. The public health issue is causing something that could turn into an economic catastrophe. And us taking this step to, on some small way, keep our small businesses, make it so our small businesses can get back to business as soon as we are past the pandemic part and aren't kicked out in the meantime, I think helps Kenmore in the long run. It's going to be a lot easier. I mean, I think most landlords, I could be wrong, I would imagine most landlords are not going to want to kick out a business that's surviving and then have to find a new business as a recession possibly starts, and then wait for them to do TIs to get going. I think us as a city, we don't want that process happening in a bunch of different storefronts and office spaces around the city either, because then we're starting from ground one with economic development work that we've been doing for, for as long as I've been on the council. So I view these two things as very well, very much tied together. And I think this is a logical step to put us in a better position for getting our local economy going once, once the, once the pandemic is, is over, or at least once we have the all-clear to kind of start returning to normal. So I'm very much in favor.
Councilmember File?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Baker. I also agree with Deputy Mayor Herbig here. This, the reason to have a resolution like this is really to support our businesses. We don't want to have a financial business crash and failure of our own community. And it's all about timing, giving the timing needed for those businesses to be able to apply to those federal programs and build that bridge. And so this offers an opportunity to build that bridge, support our community, and give our small businesses an opportunity to bounce back. And I think that's what we want. We want to ensure that when we recover from the COVID crisis, that people have jobs to return back to, and businesses have the opportunity to continue to thrive rather than crash and burn. So I, I believe that this is an excellent movement forward. It aligns with, you know, leading thinkers on the federal front to the state and regional authorities. And I think it would be a wise choice for us to adopt tonight.
So my concern in all this is, is we did this for people in, in housing. We said no evictions. And I wanted to extend that to the business community. Because like Deputy Mayor had said, this is going to be a tough recovery. The rents are going to be still due. It's just giving a break and not having them evicted during this time. So hopefully, they can start back up, because the last thing I want to see is coming out of this as we start to gain business in the, in the economy and we get off of this, stay at home. I want the business to be there and have an opportunity to open again if, if they so choose. But also, hopefully have a, some security for the people that were employed there, if that's at all possible. So I'm figuring if we do it for the homeowners, we can certainly do it for the businesses. Anyway, Councilmember O'Kane?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add in, I think this is, given, given the crisis that we're in and the uncertainty that we're living through, to give our small businesses some peace of mind that they'll have a place to return to as they're muddling through all of the paperwork and formalities of keeping in business, for us to give them some protection that they will be able to return to their businesses, I think is something that our community will greatly appreciate. So thank you for bringing this to our agenda today.
I, you know, I think that just one example is Kenmore Air. Kenmore had over 120 employees. They now have 29. It, it's been devastating to, to the community. And so it's something I feel very strongly about doing, and I'm glad to see that there is a number of you that feel the same way. So anyway. Any further discussion? Councilmember Marshall, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't.
All right. So, we have before us Resolution Number 20-338, Ratifying a Proclamation and the Issuance of an Emergency Order or Emergency Rule 20-06, which is Temporary Moratorium on Small Business Nonprofit Tenant Evictions. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Did you get who? Kelly?
I got it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any further discussion? Hearing them. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember O'Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember File?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
And Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Passed unanimously.
Wonderful. Next item on the agenda is Staff Report, Pandemic Status and Pandemic Effect on Rhododendron Boathouse. City Manager, Mr. Carlinzey?
Thank you. Just overall status update. And I, I trust you all are pretty much in the loop on what's going on with city operations. I feel like we've been doing a pretty good job communicating that out to the community. Here, operationally, I, I think probably 90% of my time this last month or so, month and a half now, has been on this pandemic. It's, it's crazy. There's just so much that affects a city. And so many of my coworkers have had to just really carve out their time to, to react to this. There's both internal and external effects that we have to deal with as a city. I think oh, one thing I was going to say is information overload is a huge piece of this. Never in my career have I received so many emails a day for such a prolonged amount of time. And I, I actually have to do email triage. I can't read them all. There's such a massive flow of information coming in. And I respectfully ask you to just bear with me on, on, when it comes to emails in particular, because I'm not the fastest in the world right now on responding to people's emails, just because I'm just getting a flood of them. And oftentimes, it's very redundant information that comes in. That's an example. Oh, like, you remember when the assessor said, hey, we're going to defer property tax payments from April to June? I probably got about 10 emails telling me that. And so I guess that's better than not enough information, but it's pretty crazy. But this organization's been amazing. I couldn't be more happy with and proud of my coworkers. They've all done what's needed to help you know, keep things going. I'm really impressed without, with how much city services we're still able to provide. And how much my coworkers are able to keep the ball rolling in so many areas. Permits being a prime example. We've, we've set up, we, we have the technology to have, to keep processing permits. In today's world, it's actually not necessary at all to come up to the permit counter in person. You don't need to anymore. You can totally have your permit totally processed online electronically. And our staff have been doing a really good job, and hats off to the Finance and Administration Department for getting our technology set up that way, because we're hearing that not, there, there are other cities in the area, in the region that aren't able to keep the permitting process going right now. We're also trying to do inspections through video where the contractor holds their phone up to the job site and we try to look at it. There's some cases where we have to go take a look at it, where it's essential. Like, somebody's getting a new furnace or a water heater, you know, we've got to, we still got to inspect those and we're taking precautions. And we have, we do have field personnel on a limited basis taking care of our infrastructure. Making sure that our stormwater system facilities are operating properly and that, that is an environmental issue that we need to stay on top of. Also, just making sure that our, our parks are secure and safe and our roads are clear and that site distances are maintained. All those things, we still need field personnel. They are all taking precautions. And we have those as guidance for our all of our employees, such as one employee per vehicle. And we have signage on our vehicles that says, stay away, you know, 10 feet back or something like that. And, and then also disinfecting and, and things like that to go with, with it. So but City Hall remains closed through May 4th, so do our other facilities. The only thing that remains open is the Diva Espresso in the hangar, but the public portion of the hangar remains closed. Our parks, restrooms, parks amenities are closed. But parks themselves are still open and we're monitoring that closely. We're not seeing big groups gathering in the parks. And so as long as people are doing the physical distancing, I think we'll probably continue to keep our parks open. So on capital projects, we're also keeping those going. Well, the, with the Sammamish River Bridge is the only capital project that's under construction right now. We have other projects that are in design and, including all the walkways and waterways projects. And Kelly, we advertised for bid for Wantita Drive, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So we, we have the bid advertisement out for Wantita Drive, which is huge. And so we're really excited for that. So things like that are moving forward. The, the boathouse project at Rhododendron is also moving forward, and you approved the contract. You gave me authorization to sign the contract with GenCap to construct the boathouse facility at Rhododendron Park. But this, this pandemic has slowed things down a bit when it comes to getting the $250,000 commitment from the school district in writing. So we're in frequent communications with the school district. They continue to tell us they, that they intend to still contribute to $250,000. But getting that agreement in writing from them is slowed down. So I just want you to know that I have not yet signed the, the construction contract with GenCap. I intend to sign it this week, possibly tomorrow. But I intend to sign it without having formally secured the $250,000 from the school district.
Councilmember File?
Yes, um, let me, I just want to make sure I am clearly understanding. Is it that the superintendent and their contracts department has not signed off yet on the contract agreement? Or is it that there's some sort of hangup in their process?
I just think that their, their attention's been given to this pandemic and they haven't given it the priority that it needs, and, and no fault of their, I totally understand. But it's just moving a bit slower. It's, it's, again, I mean, we're hearing good signs from them. We're hearing that they're going to give us the money, but there is a bit of risk to sign on to a contract that big without having $250,000 of it fully and formally secured. So.
What's the downside of waiting for them to deliver something in writing?
The project gets delayed and we get, so I can't sit on the contract with GenCap indefinitely.
Right.
I need to, I, I need to sign it pretty soon. And we could, if I didn't sign it, then we'd have to re, then we'd have to go out for bid again, and then we'd have to, we'd delay the whole project probably by a year or so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a way to, to bring the urgency to the district and get that agreement in writing. I hate to, I mean, I certainly am in favor of moving forward, and I, and I certainly don't want to delay it, but is, is there a way to light a fire on Drummond? We need this in writing. We need this in writing, not the money, just the agreement. They're going to do it.
We can certainly try. They, again, they're talking to us, they're responding to us. So it's not like we're getting crickets from them. But it's just taking a little longer than we thought.
Councilmember File.
So it's my experience that when the, when North Shore School District is very interested in a project and very seriously committed to it, they don't tend to back out this late in the game. However, if it would be helpful, I'd be willing to help make a call to my contact with the district to help encourage that along. I know that sometimes it's just that people are, you know, busy and overloaded at times of incredible growth. You know, they're expanding a couple of schools as well. They still have construction projects going. So I understand they're on a slim ship and everybody's doing a lot. But I'm willing to put a call to contact, if that's okay with the rest of our council members.
I'm actually not recommending political intervention right now. I believe the school district staff are working with us in good faith. And there's, and I think political intervention right now would probably rub them the wrong way.
Okay.
Yeah, I think what the city manager is doing is, in the contacts he has, is going to help us a lot. So, yeah, I know you're doing whatever you can do to make this happen.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it to your attention. I think it's low risk, but there is some risk. And I just wanted you to be fully aware of it.
Yeah, and with the financial report that we got tonight, I'm just a little hesitant on taking risk. But in any event, any other questions, comments?
Just a, sorry.
Yeah, Councilmember Shrubnik.
Just a quick point of clarification. I mean, this is part of the capital budget. I mean, really, you know, where the financial sustainability issues are around the operating budget. I mean, they'll hit the capital budget as well. But it seems like if you've still got communication, if you're not getting, as you put it, crickets, I think we should just trust that it'll happen. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, I am, by the way, also worried about the capital budget because we don't know what's going to happen with REIT revenue, real estate excise tax, which is, comes from the sale of real estate. We're not seeing a halt in real estate right now, but it could be a lag that happens six months from now or whatever. So real estate excise tax funds our capital. And then impact fees also fund our capital projects. And we're going to be projecting a drop in those if the fees drop too. So.
Yeah, Joy, yeah. Finance Director, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you.
I'll get that title out.
I don't know if this would provide any comfort, but I've most recently been working with Kay Prissard of Inslee Best and North Shore's attorney. And I know that almost every day there are conversations. And I got involved in trying to satisfy their concern over property insurance and liability and that kind of thing. And that was just as late as last week. So still a lot of back and forth going on. And I think they're just trying to satisfy themselves as to some final, some final details in the contract. So like I said, this is, I think it's Friday and Thursday, we were having conversations back and forth. So it's still moving, it's still moving along. I know Debbie and Ben and Rob aren't here to speak to that, so I thought I would.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Appreciate the report. All right. Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Reports, Comments, and Initiatives. Let's start with Councilmember O'Kane.
I just want to give a big thank you to Finance Director Joanne Gregory for the outstanding report that you gave this evening. Thank Kelly Chellin for arranging this Zoom meeting and getting this going. It's really fun having the Hollywood Squares on my, on my screen. Anyway, it's really nice that we can see each other and meet while we're not able to meet in chambers. And Rob, thank you to you and your staff for the outstanding work that you've been doing throughout this crisis. And I just am really thankful that we were able to pass the Temporary Eviction Moratorium for Small Business Owners in addition to our residents, our tenants, because I really do think that that step of peace of mind that we can give our community members is incredibly important. So thank you. That's it.
All right, Councilmember Marshall.
I echo everything. Councilmember O'Kane just said, thank everybody. We, I wish I had a phrase like Franklin Delano Roosevelt or something along those lines about fear. And that's the only thing that we have to fear. We do have a very real virus to deal with. But I just want to remind or highlight, highlight the same sort of idea to that with everybody involved. And I know that we can all get through this if we work together and keep working together. You know, as a city and it starts, even with the whole nation, it starts at the local level. And if we know our neighbors, we work with our neighbors, we work through stuff, we can work through this. We'll be able to do it. So just on a positive note. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Curtis.
The only thing I would say is that I like the Zoom meetings. They're better than no meetings. I miss you guys. And at least I could see you this way.
Yes, indeed. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Ditto. Everything people have said. And, you know, a huge shout out to our incredible staff, you know, led by Rob and, you know, really holding it all together and serving our community so well through this time. And I also am excited that we're able to do this and see everybody. It's kind of fun. I was thinking Brady Bunch, not Hollywood Squares, but, you know, same kind of idea. And I also, I don't know who did it, but I'm loving the hashtag together for Kenmore. I mean, there's other cities that also have that, but I don't know. Folks have seen the big billboard on 522 and then little signs all around the city. So it's, it's, it's kind of neat to see the community coming together.
Yeah, it really is. I got a neighbor that has a sign in their yard of, together with Kenmore. Councilmember File.
I want to thank our city staff. They've been amazing. I know they're taking on a huge workload. There is so much that has to be done and has been getting done. I'm just in awe and I'm really impressed. So thank you for your hard work. I also thank you all for your support over the last week or so. And it's so nice to see all of you tonight and be able to get some city business done with the council and see each other versus being over the phone. It's really nice to see a human face. But I did have some news. I have achieved my Association of Washington Cities Certificate of Municipal Leadership. And so I'm very proud of that. That's a lot of good hard work, learned a lot. Working on achieving my advanced certificate next. So keep on tricking along, right? But it's good to learn about what we do and learn more about the processes that we can do and work with as council members. And so I encourage our other fellow council members to do what you can during your certificate. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Everybody else has already said everything I was going to say. Thank you to Rob. Thank you to city staff. You're doing a heck of a job and it's good to see everybody.
Kelly.
Yes.
You've done a tremendous job with pulling this meeting together and setting it up. It's gone, it's gone very smoothly and I really think that you're the one who did it. So thank you for setting this up and getting everybody in as panelists and handling all of this. You've done an amazing job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make one comment. Appreciate all the nice things you guys are saying about staff. And I want to make sure I tell my coworkers. But I honestly want to take this moment and say that Rob is such an incredible leader. And I think that's where a lot of this comes from. It starts at the top and he's an awesome city manager. So the caring that he shows to all of us is awesome.
Yeah, you know, I've had a few years with him. He's turned his camera off. Anyway, when we did the, I saw the leadership qualities in him. It was hard to, hard to ignore. And he certainly lived up to everything that we saw. And he's a tremendous leader for the organization and we really, really appreciate him. But we also appreciate the staff. I think Joanne Gregory has done an amazing job with the financial report and all the backup that she has with Brian and.
Oh, yeah.
I knew this was going to happen. Oh.
Yeah, the management team is really coming together. We meet every day.
You're right. Yeah, you guys are. But who's up there besides Brian and Joanne?
Carla.
Carla, that's who I'm trying to think of. And then everybody down in permitting and Debbie Bent's staff. It's just a tremendous organization. And the new, the new Public Works crew that came together in January, you know, they're doing a tremendous job. The city is looking good. And I think it's become very evident, the quality that they've added than they've gone out on their own. So I think we all really, really appreciate that. And if there's no further business to come before us, we will have this meeting adjourned. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.